We're gonna get started in just a second here. We're waiting on Mr. Silas. Ms. Yule is gonna be a couple minutes late, so. Thank you all for being here with us. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started at six o'clock or so. Thank you again for being here. We appreciate it. And this is our first meeting in June, so we'll do our best to go through the material and hopefully everyone will be well informed. So we're gonna start with a moment of silence. If y'all wanna stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good. Next item is approval of the agenda. If I don't hear any objections, we'll consider the agenda approved. Alright, moving on is next approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes here, the regular meeting and the special call meeting, so we need a motion for that. So it's moved and seconded, we approve both sets of minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It looks like that's the name of the speaker. One, two, three, four, five, six. None opposed, there's no one else. Okay, moving on to office of board chairman. One item under that discussion there. So we do have a meeting scheduled for June twenty-third. We really don't have enough material or we don't have the material to really be a productive meeting. So last year and years past, we have only had one meeting in June. So I think I'd entertain a motion to cancel the June twenty-third meeting if someone would be so moved to do that. Go ahead, Dr. Bradley.
I don't think I'm in disagreement, especially I know our first meeting, or the meeting that was canceled, the first meeting that was canceled due to the C- nineteen business, we were set to talk about discipline. You know, it was one of our open discussion items. It could be a time to include that. But we, the way I suppose, but I do see, you know, the value of us getting back into, into that.
That's fine.
Do we actually like the motion?
We did not, no.
Because we have the meeting for seven minutes a day and they put on the agenda maybe an hour of this discussion, an hour of testing. Or thereabout.
And we can certainly accommodate that, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Alright. Ms. Yule, we were just talking about the June twenty-third. And the motion is from Dr. Bradley to have discussion on discipline and the testing.
And related to how exactly what they plan to do.
And it'll likely be.
I like that kind of attitude.
Riley, it'll likely be somewhat, well, adapt it from what we had probably planned to do, just based on the circumstances that we have.
I do see a lot of discussion and one of the things that the legislature is intending to always be extended after. Is I don't know what they're going to accomplish. But anyway, I'd love to talk about that and I would personally like to hear what we are doing now. We're gonna do for the board this program and I don't really know what testing, that should be important for it to make sure that's what. I'd like to hear that and follow that up with discussion.
Alright. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we have the meeting on the twenty-third and the two topics are discipline and testing. So all those in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, and that's set. None opposed. Okay, good. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on here. So the next thing is information items. The following items are for information only and do not require board action. And it looks like the first four are construction status reports. None opposed.
This chair members of board, as we normally do, I'm ready on the presentation here. Here we go. As we normally do, we want to continue to keep the board updated on the status of our facilities projects and they continue to move forward in good progress. Let's start with Millbrook Valley High School. If you had opportunity again to drive down Mustang Drive, you'll begin to see this facility coming together. The front awning is in on the front side of the school, but also if you go around the back here, the bottom left picture is a picture of what will eventually be the outside seating area for the students. If you go there today, this canopy is already installed and you'll begin to see the paneling that actually matches the older part of the building, which will bring it together being installed as well. On the top push here is the outside of the gym. This area here will also have the paneling to hopefully bring again this building together, trying to merge the existing building with the new building. We've started some painting here. This is the new cafeteria area and what you see here would be some new lunch kind of looks where it gives a restaurant feel to the cafeteria, kind of what we've been doing in our facility projects, giving the students, attempting to give students a next level experience during lunch. And in the middle, they'll have an opportunity to set up condiments, maybe some coffee and things like that, moving to a college feel type setting. And right here is the new awning that is where the new addition connects to the older part of the building. And this is an outside space that's covered. And this is where the focal point again where the window panes here will also have the name of the school, but it'll be something that you can see from Mustang Drive to actually give an identity to the front part of the school. Millbrook, Millbrook is moving along rather well. This is the, what used to be library. They've had an opportunity to go in and completely cut that area in the back corner here behind this back o' yule. That, that would actually be an existing classroom when this is completed and the media center has moved down towards the actual opening, what used to be the front office of the facility. But here you see more demo and this is going along extremely well. The biggest thing we've had to overcome has been the site work there. There was a lot of unforeseen conditions in regards to the site. And right now, I went out there this morning and they're digging footings. So once we get the footings in, this should move extremely fast in getting the two-story addition up. But we will have the new cooling tower that's up and already in place. And once we get the building up, we'll be able to bring that together. And the old building that didn't have a newer boiler system will now have a newer cooling system. So we're not only addressing the new building, we're gonna try to merge and make sure that the environments in the old building are suitable for children as well. Right here, we've had an opportunity to extend the kindergarten classroom to make those larger. So now he's able to departmentalize his kindergarten classroom. So this is the block work that's going up. This wall was torn out and moved down so we can embody that kindergarten space. North Dakota High School, this project's moving along extremely fast and we hope that we can have an opportunity to get the board to do a walkthrough of this facility sooner than later. We've done that historically in our facilities and I think we're there where you could actually see everything in action. So this is the front facade of the wall pattern outside of the gym. It just matches the other design elements that we put in the first three phases. This is the courtyard area and you'll see the storefront windows that are going inside of the courtyard. This is a picture of the inside of the gymnasium and this is just the corridor of the gymnasium as you walk in to that facility. I wanted to show you guys a picture of the final wing as well. That's going on extremely well too in the working facility. Had the opportunity to send the board a video, I don't know if you had the opportunity to see that, of the facility at Bray Screen Elementary, and this is going on extremely well. The walls of all aspects of this building are up, so I always feel like I'm unprepared because these are pictures that were taken three weeks ago and a lot can happen over a three-week time span. What you see here is the additional classroom space for the elementary school. This is the outside of the, well, it says physical education, but this is actually a multi-purpose room for the elementary students to have PE. And you have the kindergarten addition and then you have the actual C wing, which is gonna be the added eating space for the elementary kids to make sure we keep those two spaces separate. Be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have regarding to our facilities update.
Questions for Dr. Foster, good. Patrice?
I have a question, I have a comment. I actually stopped through this frame on Friday after the question and it was coming on very fast. It looks great.
Thank you. Jason, okay.
Just a quick question, kind of counter comment, counter question. So some of this construction is a little ahead of schedule?
Some of it is ahead of schedule on the interior renovations and some of it, you know, will kind of flip flop. So it's kind of a wash for some of the weather.
Yeah, that's a good word we use as well, right?
Well, I'll tell you right now, at Millbrook, my last weather update was we're looking about sixteen days, but I think we can catch that up once the footings are in. It'll go fairly fast. But the good part about it is the inside of the facility that we're planning on doing over the summertime will be ahead of schedule, so it's kind of a wash and we feel pretty good that it'll be fine.
Well, so my comment to that is while the coronavirus created a lot of difficulties for our educators.
It creates mobility, yeah.
Here's maybe a small example, make a little bit of lemonade from some of them.
From some lemon. And I'll tell you, they did a great job. The, both contractors that we worked with have done a great job of adjusting. As soon as the word came down that we're not at school, we made some adjustments and they were ready, calling those subs and moving those schedules up. So they've done a great job of adapting to that as well. So we appreciate that. H.G. Reynolds has always done a great job, but McKnight is has proven to do just as well in their facilities.
And I agree, they're doing awesome jobs for us. Follow up to that, I gotta ask, where are we as far as budget?
We're on time, we're on the budget. I forgot to add that caveat in. So we're still tracking them, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Real quick, I know I told you that day, but I wanted to acknowledge folks, everybody. I appreciate you accommodating me on a tour of Millbrook Valley and Dwight. So I can report, everybody's looking real good. I know I've been vocal complaining a little about the bricks and maybe a couple of other things there, but from a distance, as we talked about it, at graduation, I'm hopeful that the tie-in that you said was coming will help tie in those bricks, as you said, and it appears that it may. So I just wanted to take it all.
We'll get it in the road and then we'll take our criticisms or our congratulations, either one of you.
Good, I appreciate that.
No problem, thank you, welcome to the night.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
Oh, Dr. Bradley, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Hopefully, hopefully I'm gonna keep it that way. Dr. Bradley, I think you probably changed me now, mom. But we're gonna try to keep it up, thank you.
Ms. Yule, Dr. Foster, sorry.
I just wanna say, I wanna commend everyone that had a part in doing all the construction, you know, that's already happening, that's going on. I had an opportunity to view Rich Freeman at a site again at graduation. Everything was phenomenal. Everybody was so pleased and everybody was certainly happy to be able to be on the football field.
Well, thank you, thank you.
I appreciate all of that.
Mr. Chair, again, as soon as we get the facility to a point, we would like to welcome the board on their own private tour to get a sneak peek of what this is going to look like as we have done so. As soon as that time comes, we'll be sure to reach out. Great schedule that day.
Great, thank you. Alright, the next item is the expansion of the community eligibility provision. Mr. Traxler?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Lerner, board members, special arts. This is an info item just on what we refer to commonly as a CEP lunch program, community eligibility provision. Two years ago, the board approved, okay, utilizing this and it's a program that provides free breakfast, free lunch to students at those schools, regardless of whether they've historically been free, reduced, full pay students. Two years ago, year one, we had sixteen schools. Last year, we expanded, last year as in nineteen twenty, expanded by three additional schools. For the upcoming year, we'd like to expand to Graniteville Elementary and Aiken Elementary. So that will bring us to twenty-one schools total, over half of our schools, approximately nine thousand students. Large majority of the schools are elementary. We are able to cover all of Area Four. And on the second page of the agenda item is just a listing of those schools. Again, this info only. We'll continue to review this and work with the state department every year to see if there is any expansion that's available to us as well.
Questions for Mr. Traxler? Mr. Molt, go ahead.
First of all, it's nice to see you. Appreciate that, Mr. Traxler. But I'm just curious for my own benefit, how do we select the schools?
It's largely based on poverty in simplest terms. So we work with the state to see which schools are qualified based on that, I guess. But we do work closely with the state department on that, so our school food service folks have kind of an idea of schools that it would work for, a thing that it may work for, but from that point going and working with state department folks, looking at numbers and seeing if it makes sense to do that at those schools.
Thank you. Mr. Crink, good.
Possibly two questions, Mr. Traxler. Thank you for the information, for sure. As a follow-up to Mr. Molt's question, what is the poverty threshold that qualifies a school? Do you know that?
No, sir, not off the top of my head. And it is a formula that the state department looks at with us. We, I can't tell you, there were a couple of other schools, without mentioning those schools, that we thought may be possibilities and after looking at the state department, looking at it with the state department this year, it just wasn't gonna work. Again, we'll continue to, Graniteville, we thought in year one in nineteen twenty certainly qualified, but there wasn't a base year for that. So that's why this is coming now rather than a year ago. We can certainly give that info for you.
If you wouldn't mind, I know I've seen that because we've discussed this issue before. I just don't recall the specific number, but I'll, as a comment, I'm glad that we can provide these meals. It breaks my heart to the point that we have this many campuses that qualify. Speaks to a large need that probably isn't discussed much in our county. Second question, this is funded through the federal government, correct?
That's correct.
And no concern on funding issues with some of the other funding concerns because of COVID, anything like that?
No, sir. I think we're good on this, this federal. And as part of this, and this is written in the narrative here, it does cover a four-year period. So we're only halfway through with those original schools and we'll, in two years, we'll get it extended, I would assume. We've had no issues with it. It's a good program. Of course, we want to continue to offer things that make our students want to come into our lunchrooms for breakfast, for lunch, sharing the word and getting out the word that these are meals that would be at no cost to our students, but we want them to take advantage of it.
Third question that just popped in my head, does this money help fund some of the meal program we've just recently done with the buses? Is that right?
That's separate from this. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
But if I may, and I hope I'm not stealing any other thunder, but we did, since mid-March, we, I think, provided close to a million meals, breakfast and lunch. We had several main prep sites, originally doing it one day per week. Then we moved to multiple days worth of meals, bagging breakfast and lunch. It's a shame that at the end, because I think we were all in a pretty good routine by the end, you know? It got to the point where folks didn't come in and ask, alright, what do I need to do? Folks do, alright, we've got the bread bags or we've got to do this or break down boxes. But we talk about one team and that's a perfect example. You had school food service folks, you had bus drivers. I was working Mossy Creek. We had aides that were working on the rotation, administrators. You had APs principals, you had district level folks that were out there. Yes, yes, I hear that you were at Aiken High, so we, everybody got into it. I had some folks ask me, well, what's your role? I was like, well, right now I'm food prep. Yeah, I think they enjoyed telling me what to do. They kept it straight there. But we had a great side at Mossy and a lot of other great sides and just had a tremendous effort all the way around. So I appreciate the throwing that in there too.
That's good.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, so that's all the information items. So we'll move on to the consent items. I think we have three of them on there. Following items will be voted on as a group. Individual items may be discussed prior to voting. We need a motion to hear this consent items.
Who did we hear consent items?
Alright, so it's been moved and seconded. Did we hear the consent items? And I'll go through them one at a time. If you have any questions, we can stop and talk about it. The first one is Dollar General literacy foundation donation to Hammond Hill, two thousand dollars to purchase books for at-risk students, Dollar General. The next one is a list of the courses, local school board courses for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I think they're mainly for Aiken High School. List on your attachment there. And then the third one is the Cares grant funding. Alright, any questions on those? Alright, so hearing the questions, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Alright, moving on to individual items. So we vote on each one of these individually and it looks like there's six of them. The first one is personal appointments. Entertain a motion for that?
A second motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. Did we approve the personal appointments as presented? Any discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Seven, that passes. The next one is out-of-district transfer requests. And there was a list on the, in our packet for that, so we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the out-of-district request.
So it's been moved and seconded. We accept the out-of-district request. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, none opposed. Passes Kim. Number three is a second list of out-of-district requests. Any motion on that?
Move to accept the second list of out-of-district printer requests?
So it's been moved and seconded. We approved the second list out-of-district requests. Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Dr. Bradley.
I'm sorry, move from another district to Aiken, is that correct?
Yes.
And of course, the result of that is that we have two hundred and sixty companies. But we do that. Therefore, we are, we continue to give tax money on all those kids we do to the other district.
That's correct, then we do charge them tuition too. Any other discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor, raise your hand. That's seven, none opposed, that passed. Alright. The next one is the final reading of the changes to the copyright policy, E-G-A-D. Need a motion for that? Are we in a motion for that? You're one ahead of us, Dr. Bradley. Alright, so we're, it's been moved and. You can do that motion if you'd like. Sure, go ahead.
I'll do that.
So it's been moved and seconded. We approved both policy changes. They're both final readings. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, none opposed. Thank you, Dr. Bradley. That's good. You didn't mention that last time. Alright, the last item is the second and final reading of our budget. Mr. Traxler?
Yes, sir. I think Dr. Bradley just wanted to hear the budget passed, so that's why he wanted to approve it too. So we had our first reading of the budget, made well cut our budget hearing last week and tonight is our second and final reading of the budget, but Mary Blen, would you pull that up, please? I would venture to say this may not be the final, final, as you'll hear here in a second. In your packet, you have. In your packet, you have a copy of a summary version of the budget, and a lot of this is going to be repeated. Some folks may not have heard it. Some folks may not recall it, so we'll briefly cover it. There's a summary version of the budget, just because we have ten thousand accounts. So we want to summarize as best possible while including enough info in there. We have printouts from our accounting software, general fund expenditures by object. We have another one that breaks it down by location, by object. Those are still summarized. We have a general fund revenue printout from our software. That's new. It wasn't included in the first reading. Staffing formulas, no change there. We've included that again. And we have provided an updated version of the salary schedule. Our typical must items, and that's in italics for a reason, because this has been a highly unusual year. In a typical year, the state requires us to give a step and a cost of living adjustment oftentimes. But, but always a step for teachers. And we have a history of applying that to non-teachers, to treat all employees the same. We have state retirement, we have health increases that we have to contend with. On an average year, we have charter school allocations that are, are paid based on formula. And then we have those other items that the board has approved, maybe in a previous year that has been phased in over some, some years. Sometimes it is something that's approved mid-year or early on in the process that we need to get rolling on. So those are our typical must items that we look at. Then in a typical year, as funds allowed, we look at those budget requests and those discretionary items and choose to address some of those needs there that we do have discretion over. Again, this, this isn't a typical year. So recap of our first reading of the budget. There was no step increase or cost of living adjustment. The state froze the teacher salary scale, and the message that we received was frozen means frozen. So there, there are no increases in those, regardless of whether a district had the ability to, to provide a step or cost of living adjustment locally. You will note, it may appear odd, that despite no step increase or cost of living adjustment, that regular salaries line item of the budget has increased. You'll see that. But the reason for that, we, we have some additional teacher allocations coming through our, our allocation meetings and the review of course requests and in consideration of our, of our staffing formulas at school. We had that sale program that was approved mid-year. That's, that's paid for out of the general fund, but we're flexing at-risk funds. So another pot of monies that cannot be used directly for elementary, we're moving those funds over to the general fund that is allowed to pay for it, but we had to capture those salaries there. And then in order to, to maintain our current number of 4K classrooms, and because of the exhaustion of carryover, we moved some of those costs over to the general fund. All of that contributed to an increase in salaries and fringe. We had tuition and books for those Aiken scholars juniors who will be attending USC Aiken next year. We had an increase for SRO funding that was received this year. We had to pick up a portion of that cost next year. We have the new transportation GIS system that we added into the budget at approximately a hundred and thirty thousand. Elementary fine arts funding is, is one of those items similar to what I mentioned earlier. That was phased in over three years. Two years ago, we did high school. For nineteen twenty, we did middle school, and we added eighty-three thousand allocated to elementary schools this coming year based on enrollment. So that's the third and final phase there. And then we will lose one of our two charter schools. They're going to an alternate sponsorship next year. They'll no longer be district sponsors. So what we saw in that first reading was there was a decrease in certain revenue numbers and also a decrease of a larger impact on the, on the expenditure side of our general fund budget. Now, even with that first reading that, that received approval, we, we continue to, to monitor things throughout. There are a handful of changes. One thing we heard mentioned, I think at the twenty-sixth meeting, and one thing we already had our eyes on, or maybe it was the last week that it came up, we knew that with the CARES money, we're, we're purchasing a boatload of devices. And, and with those devices, we needed additional staff. In our instructional services department, we had a vacant coordinator position. Budgeted, we determined that the best use of that, rather than filling that position, was to repurpose it to help fund two ed tech positions. The, the ed tech positions are, are paid on a lower scaled than coordinator. We, we were able to accommodate that. I did add about twenty-five thousand to the, to the salaries budget to make it work. But with all of the additional devices, we're going to have to have more bodies to work on those. After that first reading, we received an update a couple of weeks ago that, and I mentioned this last week, that there is one component of insurance, of retirement, excuse me, of the employer retirement called the insurance surcharge that we received word that it would be going up by some amount to be determined, to be announced. I added point two five percent to our, to our already twenty-one point eight one percent retirement to cover that. And that's reflected in this budget. Now, I received an email today at three thirty that said, no, it's not changing. So we have point two five percent that I added to retirement that I received word today that it's not changing. We know that we're going to have to make amendments throughout the year, so we'll, we'll correct that at that time. And as the state resumes their budget process, maybe there are some other changes in, in store that we'll have to accommodate. In our first reading of the budget, we had estimates for the premiums for workers' comp and property and liability insurance through SKISBIT. Shortly thereafter, we received the renewal quotes for the year, and we've updated those numbers in the budget. One thing I failed to include was loan maintenance costs that we contract in one of our areas. And this was something that we added mid-year in nineteen twenty in exchange for elimination of certain vacant positions within the maintenance department. I'd taken the vacant positions out, but I had not included the, the funds needed for this loan maintenance contract. So I, I did add that in the second reading. And all of this, ultimately, we have a bottom line of revenues for the general fund and C expenditures. And I show that as a line item increase to the balance. Just briefly, these are the things that, that I've discussed, just in terms of numbers. So this is the summary version of the budget that you received. You see that regular salaries are up, purchase services, instruction, that's tuition, with additional cost for security. We talked about legal a year ago. We, we thought that we may go in-house. We didn't, so we dropped the legal expenditures budget. This number here included three hundred thousand. That was in nineteen twenty budget for non-recurring vehicle replacements. There was a need for additional dollar sum repairs and maintenance, so we moved that up. We discussed it last time, and that includes the loan maintenance that I failed to include before. Most of this purchase services technology is a GIS software for transportation. This includes the books for the Aiken scholars, students who will be attending USC Aiken and the elementary school fine arts funding that was added to the budget. The debt service increased for the ABM payment. We offset that against energy cost. I mentioned the non-recurring vehicles budget that went away again, that shifted up to the repairs and maintenance. Note the decrease in our payments to charter schools next year for the loss of, of our largest charter school and what we anticipate paying the remaining charter school this next year. And then this is a plug item, in essence, is, is an increase in fund balance to help us balance our general fund budget. Overall, we had a point three seven increase in the budget, going from two hundred and five million, last year's original, to two hundred and six million and change. This is stuff to read here, but with that, and in your summary, and what we'll post on the website, folks will, will see little footnotes here that, that help describe what some of the changes are and what some of the things are that we've discussed here. Again, there's, there's no increase in operating mileage. That's included in this budget. We haven't increased it since the thirteen fourteen school year. Conservative property tax estimates, we, we did have some reductions in some of our allocations for the fact of losing the charter school. Some of those, some of those state revenue numbers are based on ABM and, and our number of students. So with that going down, the allocations went down. And again, we flexed at-risk funds to fund the Excel program. So this is the revenue side of the general fund. This number here, this number here went down for the loss of the charter school. This one here went up. It's actually a net. We had an original allocation last year from the state. They increased it. We netted out for the loss of those students and, and still show a net increase compared to, to last year's original budget. This line item is where Excel is, again, two hundred and six million for our general fund budget. The majority of our focus is on the general fund, is our general operating fund. The other funds have strings attached there for specific programs. I did want to mention that the special revenue fund number here includes the six point seven million in CARES funding. And it's, these are numbers that, that could change too. So if we receive some additional funds or changes in allocation, sometimes we may not know what the upcoming year's allocation is until we get into the year. So we, we bring amendments forward regularly. So next steps, I, I mentioned this, this is the second and final reading, if you approve, but it's not the, the final, final one. So we'll post this on the website, and we'll, we'll work up a detailed budget. But the state isn't finished with their budget. They're going to resume it in September, and at that time, they may approve some, some things that we have to accommodate in our budget. If they approve something like a, a step increase or some other things that were, are required, we'll bring forward amendments to the budget. It may require a budget work study. It may be something more than a, than a twenty-minute discussion in a board meeting that we want to look a little bit deeper at, but we, we will bring those forward as amendments for consideration. It's really tracking that process now. There, there are a lot of upcoming meetings. We'll, we'll continue to watch as the Board of Economic Advisors at the state level continues to look at revenue numbers. It's, it's real interesting to see how things are going. Early on in this, this budget process, the state went in thinking that a combination of current year numbers, new numbers, new dollar figures, that there might be approximately two billion dollars at its disposal, not just for education, but for addressing a variety of things. And a lot of that is going out because of COVID, because of the closures. So we'll continue to, to monitor that, see what that come back with and follow. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Wolf, go.
Mr. Traxler, I've got, I just dotted out three questions, and you can probably answer them fairly easy. First one, salaries for the head tech positions coming out of one coordinator position. Are those salaries competitive entry-level type salaries? Or are they not so competitive since we took them out of one position?
Well, they're, they're based on our current scale for those technology positions. Yes, right. And it wasn't a, it wasn't quite a two-for-one conversion. I did have to add twenty-five thousand there to, to make it work. But it is based, an estimate off of our technology specialist scale.
Perfect. Okay, yes, sir. Number two is, I noticed the tech and software budget up there. And with the change in the charter school, did we provide any tech or software support to that charter school that's leaving us? Not minimal if we did?
I would say minimal if any as far as tech and software. Nowadays, they do receive some allocations that, that could have used for technology type purchases. But as far as our technology department might be working directly with them, I would say it's minimal.
Okay. All right, and the last one, it kind of caught my eye when you were talking about the potential tax deductions and, and maybe, maybe even some lesser tax to pay. And I thought about the Bell and Campbell High School. If we're selling that, that property, does that come out of our? But first of all, I assume the, the income or the revenue goes into our budget somewhere, and the tax liability comes out of the budget somewhere? Is that true?
Well, we wouldn't pay taxes on that property.
Oh, okay.
As a government entity, but yes, or as typically something like that. A sale of property would roll into the, to the general fund budget as another revenue or sometimes it may be something that, that the board designates those funds to assist with.
And that's not final yet anyway, right? Is that true? We haven't realized those funds yet.
We still own that property.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Traxler. I'm sorry I missed the first reading. Hostilization, whatnot. I have two, two questions. I'll start with maybe the softball, following up to Mr. Bolton with the two tech positions. I'm assuming that Technology Department had, had some insight in related to that adjustment. Thank you. And then the second question, maybe not quite as much of a softball. I apologize if this was discussed at the first reading. I noticed that we've cut our athletic transportation budget by two hundred dollars. Can you kind of high level, what's our overall impact to our extracurriculars between athletics and arts, man, things like that? I know we're adding at the elementary level on the fine arts program, but just from a high. high level, what are we seeing there?
All right, so I've got to pull it up on the screen because it's too small on my Yeah, all this is, the board approved several years ago fifty thousand for athletics transportation, and we allocated that to schools based on enrollment. Of course, the larger schools got a much larger portion, but whenever you look at a Wagner Sally or Reach training that has between two and three hundred students, they got a very small portion. And for those board members who aren't aware, these are funds that were approved at a time when coaches were driving all over the state. So they would teach during the day or work during the day, drive the bus, coach their event, drive home, they may have an eighteen hour day or more. We were concerned with the safety of our students. We put funds in the budget so schools would be able to draw on that as a reimbursement to help pay for bus drivers, so coaches wouldn't have to, wouldn't feel the need. So that's a little bit of background. Originally, it was fifty thousand. Well, small schools got such a small portion that it really didn't amount to much. So we put a minimal amount, we guaranteed that each school had at least five thousand dollars. And that's why it gets to an odd amount. So that decrease of two hundred and nine dollars is really a decrease in student enrollment numbers. We've guaranteed that each school gets the five thousand, this is how the allocation felt out there. So I may not have answered part of your question, but that's why that's down to two or nine.
Sure. And that's, I appreciate that insight into that. I know that we still have some instances where coaches are having to drive anyways because there's so much going on and whatnot, and that is what it is. Hopefully, we can fix that at some point. I guess my main concern really in asking that question is with the COVID situation and I don't know how many athletics programs essentially just slammed to a halt, that weren't able to fund themselves through ticket sales and things like that. But at the same time, I know a lot had expended money on uniforms and things like that already. I'm just, I'm concerned about that from the extracurricular standpoint. And I don't know, hopefully, the state will give us some extra money, but that, so from I guess just from a high level athletics standpoint, let's remove the bus conversation. Any thoughts there?
In general, the athletics funding from the district has been facilities, supplements, and when the board has made one-time funds available, and it's been a, that's most of the funding from the general fund, I believe. Again, a lot of time supplementing with one-time funds. As far as loss of revenue, and we have ADs here, I would think softball, soccer, baseball compared to football and basketball, thank goodness, probably our big moneymakers for the athletic departments did have it. They may tell me I'm off a little bit, but thank goodness, we did get those in. But I, so much of it is what we would call local funds and funded at the school local level outside of one-time type items that we've done in the past occasionally for maybe uniform replacements or new helmets and equipment, those kind of items.
Just a couple of comments. I guess I'm glad to see that adjustment was made or recognition that maybe the smaller schools are not equitably funded, because while they may not have every team that some of the larger schools have, I mean, they still have probably have venture to say most, and they have transportation associated with that to support their schedules. So we have some athletic directors here, I see, I'm a little put on the spot, but I would be interested to know at some point in time if what they receive is adequate, what it actually goes for, does more have to come out of school funding, but is not enough? So that's one. And then two, in general, I think whatever we give schools for athletics is not enough, in my opinion. I think when you compare us to other districts, and that may not be fair, with the tax base, et cetera, but it's just not enough. I think athletics plays a key role in all aspects of experience and discipline on that, so.
Well, not to speak for those guys, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity at some point in the future, but yeah, I would venture to guess that they would side with your thoughts there. One thing I do want to reiterate, we are likely, I think, probably coming back after the state approves their budget in the fall. We'll see what it includes, this is a bare bones budget now. They may not add too much to it, or there may be some significant adjustments that we have, but we took a cautious approach here. We haven't come this year forward with a listing of budget requests as in the past. We really focused on these are items that have been approved, that we have to do, those type of items, we held back on those discretionary items for future consideration.
More questions for Mr. Kraxler? All right, well, as always, a very good budget, we appreciate all the hard work, Mr. Kraxler. So we need a motion and take a vote here on the final reading of the budget.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that we accept the final reading of the budget as presented.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, did we accept the second and final reading of the budget? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, sure.
I appreciate all this work that's been done, and I hope and encourage the state legislature to revisit this as soon as possible, because there really been a lot of mistreatment that might just cost us out there.
Good comment. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. That passes, none opposed. All right, so moving on to individual board members, I think we have one correspondence that we wanted to talk about. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I received a letter from a community member, and he said it was okay to mention his name, it's Jerry Owen. He is not in my district, but I know him personally, so he handed me this. And he wrote a letter to the AFS Intercultural Program outlining frankly several pretty serious concerns, I thought. And I just wanted to highlight some of that, bring that to the board's attention. And he appreciated me do that, appreciated us taking a look at it. I'm not going to mention the student's name or the host, Jerry was not the host, his daughter befriended an exchange student through this program, who was from Kenya. Couple things I just highlighted in here, the student was very active in her church at home, wanted to be attending church, the host mom said that she went to church but did not, which kind of leads into the issue that the host mom's not properly vetted and seems to have misrepresented several things. I've got to get to probably the major thing. It's a multiple page letter, so that's why I'm not going to read the whole thing. We'd be here for probably an hour, but I will read this paragraph. My understanding is that there was never a home visit made by an AFS representative during the student's time in the program. A friend of mine hosted an exchange student from Europe this year by international exchange, and he had four in-home visits while she lived with his family. I find it hard to believe no one from AFS ever stepped foot in the host's household. Perhaps on one of those visits, AFS would have discovered the air conditioner heater didn't work, she had a box fan and a space heater. And another point of concern, there were numerous times when the student was alone by herself late at night, because the host family just wasn't present. Read half of another paragraph. From what I have observed as to how the student was treated through the exchange program with AFS, AFS lacks the ability to look after the best interests of the students in the program. AFS's training and supervision are hardly adequate. Student told us, other Kenyan students told us, oh, other Kenyan students that had some part experiences with AFS. Well, I'm very concerned that because they came from a third world country, AFS turned their back on them. And he sent this long letter to the head of AFS and a handful of layers of government, including me, all the way up through the federal government. And as of this afternoon, he has not heard back from AFS, and this was sent on May twenty-second. So I told him I would bring it up. I know we do have some excellent partners in the exchange program, and he mentioned one of those, but we may want to at least take a hard look at how this particular partner is or is not serving these students. So I don't know if that requires a motion or not, or if I can make a motion on reading the letter, but I'll just present that and maybe the administration can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Green, the board approves all organizations that place exchange students in our schools, and we can review those from time to time. I've read the letter, and we were taking a look at that. Right now, all inbound exchange students are on hold, so we won't have any exchange students this fall. So that gives us some time to investigate and see what the issues are. And if we determine that we need to remove AFS from the list, then we'll bring a recommendation of that effect to the board once I do that.
Jerry said go through the rundown again, but his phone number's on the letter, I hear everybody copies that.
That all right, everyone? I think that's a pretty good, that's a pretty solid path forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. All right, I think that was it for individual board members unless there was anything else. Ms. Jackson, go.
I'd like to make a comment. Yesterday, I had to go to Clearwater Elementary, excuse me, to drop my sons out there, working close today, and I encountered the principal and several teachers and the vice principal, and they did not know who I was, but they were extremely kind, answered all of my questions, even without knowing who I was. And I just wanted to give them credit for that, because like I say, he didn't know me from, you know, Brooklyn that wall, but he was extremely nice and kind, and I just appreciated that. And then after, I did tell them who I was, of course, he was just, you know, a little taken aback, but I told him I appreciate it, just the simple act of kindness and just talking to me and answering my questions just on a parent now. So I just want you to know that Clearwater Elementary grows.
Good. Good. All right, anyone else? I'm just going to take the opportunity too, just to say thanks for all the hard work of everyone pulling off the graduations last week. I mean, I think we all attended most of them or some of them, whatever we could, and it was remarkable. I mean, the students really appreciated, the parents really appreciated it. I know we're going to talk about it in July a little bit, but y'all couldn't have done any better, I don't think, you can't, and I just commend everyone that had a part in it. So I think it meant so much to our students to be able to walk across the fields and receive a diploma. I know my niece goes to high school in North Carolina, and she graduated, and they didn't have any kind of ceremony at all. And it kind of breaks your heart to see that after so many years of education, and you know, it's just, high school is really, graduation is just really an important event, and I think in a child's life, so we appreciate y'all doing all that, too.
Quick comments follow up on that. My daughter was one in the class of twenty twenty at USC Aiken, and they've had the opposite experience. And so it is very nice to see it at the district level for the high schools, because I've seen the potential issues there at the college. But I want to also say that this district did an excellent job with COVID response and issues entirely, including feeding the population of students. So I mean, it'd be nice to see that in paper sometime, so that all the negative news we get.
I think it'd be great, I'd like to run a presentation, and board meeting at some point, that you just played out all the things that this can do to kind of, because it's good to the last group, I mean, I felt people, you know, I'm not hearing about something that I didn't know about, and I personally would really like to know, and still my children places, exactly what all the big candidates did, to educate children who are at school. I think that's my answer, I mean, if you're brave about having the meals they serve, they never, we don't know what many of them, many of those meals are prepared, delivered, all that.
A lot of sweat.
People in this room.
Good, that's a good suggestion, don't you think? That's a good suggestion.
One last thing that I failed to mention, but part of that, part of that whole thing was the distance learning and what the teachers and the administrators were having to do. To me, I haven't seen a lot of information about that, but I've heard a lot about it, and I think they deserve a lot of kudos, a lot of attention for doing what they've done.
I just want to echo that too. I mean, you know, on all levels, I think this district has done a phenomenal job during COVID, and especially the teachers and staffs at the schools too. So many teachers have gone above and beyond and been available to the students and the parents by email, by Zoom, whatever, you know, and I know that that's appreciated by everybody. So I just appreciate the links that everyone has gone through at the district.
All right, I think we're on to superintendent, offices superintendent. Good, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you board members for all of those kind of words, because it is an incredible team that we have that was able to pull off the things that we've done in the last eleven weeks in bringing school to a close. It was difficult, not only sweat, but sore backs and a lot of calluses and a few lumps, Mary Lynn, I think, out of this. But when we look at the meals that we served and delivered, the distance learning, the essential functions like finance and human resources that continued throughout the district, we didn't miss a beat. We kept things going, and every employee continued to receive their salaries throughout all of this, so we feel good about what happened. We look forward to presenting to you on what went on over these last three months. So thanks to our staff, our incredible team that's done so much. Graduation again, we're very pleased that we were able to have in-person graduations. The day that we made that decision, things were still up in the air, going back and forth and looking at what was happening around the country, and we were already aware that the university system had pretty much pulled a plug, and we're aware that many other school districts had already done that or had decided to settle for virtual graduations. We were determined to find a way, and we did, so thanks to everybody who put their heads together and found the solutions. In a couple of weeks, we hope to, on the twenty-third, also share some things that have been going on, preparing, you know, we're closed out this year, but we've got to prepare for next year. A lot of teams are working on that. With ideas, we've got a survey out now that literally already has thousands of responses, and we hope to have that information to include in the planning by the end of this week. We'll continue to have meetings, we'll continue to pull groups together, together different subcommittees, working on the hundreds. subcommittees, working on the hundreds of moving parts that will go into reopening school in the fall. So some exciting things going on there. We won't be able to give you a solution in a couple of weeks, but we will be able to give you an update on the progress that we're making toward that. So those are some things that we're really excited about, excited about. One more update that I want to give you, and the reason that we have some of our A.D.s here, I'm going to ask Dr. Foster to come forward. As far as getting back to school, and we talked to him about athletics this evening, what does the transition look like back into training for our student athletes? So we hope that we're ready to begin transitioning into that, and you've got a good bit of information in your packets, and Dr. Foster's going to give you a summary of that information.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of board, Ms. Lawrence, I brought some of the help this morning, this afternoon, and these ladies and gentlemen sitting in the back, I just want to take an opportunity to, first of all, recognize them. We've had some meetings, and this is kind of like our task force. As you may have heard, the South Carolina High School League has approved Phase One of conditioning for high school athletics. But these folks chose to come and join us just to show a sense of unity that we have put our minds together and come up with some, a great, great solution. We have Coach Brian here from Silver Love High School, I'm going to save that lady for last. We have Coach Peluski here from South Aiken High School, Dr. Yal Burrows from Operations, Monica Mazel, who's over our Health Services. And I save Coach Jada for last, because she's kind of led this and spearheaded this process for us, along with the help of everyone else. But we've had some meetings with all A.D.s and even some principals as well, and some athletic trainers that made up this task force to come up with what we feel is a protocol that we can accept and ensure the highest level of safety and security for our students. And that's what it all boils down to, is having an opportunity to give our students a chance to get back to some normalcy while also ensuring some health and safety in that regard. Okay, well, you have a copy of the presentation. This is actually, I mean, I'll post this as well. What you actually have, and I'm not going to go through every single bullet, you have the actual training that we have developed, that every single coach would have to go through and sign off and verify, that they've gone through this training, and they clearly understand not only what it entails, but also they understand how to implement these guidelines. We've looked at the DHEC, CDC, and also South Carolina High School League regulations to help formalize what these processes would be. And Phase One only involves conditioning, so I need to make sure that we put that out there. Phase One, per the High School League, only involves conditioning, no competition, only conditioning. So what you can expect to see, or if the board so approves here in Aiken, that we allow fall sports only to begin in the Phase One at this time. They're the ones who are in the most pressing times, but it also allows us to limit the number of students accessing facilities, which are defined in this presentation as well. But also, we need to make sure that parents understand that any student that, or any parent that doesn't feel comfortable, they can have their child forego Phase One, and there's not going to be any penalty. Again, we're going to be considerate of everyone's comfort level in moving forward. Some parents may be fine, and some may have a little more difficulty, and we're going to make sure we make those accommodations for those parents. As far as daily procedures is outlined, the key things are each head coach is required to be present for all conditioning. This isn't anything, and I've made it clear to all A.D.s, this is not something that we're going to turn over to an assistant or volunteer coach. No one has the authority to put anyone's health and safety in jeopardy, and we need to make sure we have adequate oversight in that regard, and they've committed to that moving forward. Head coaches are responsible for the screening documentation. As you see in this document, there's some screening guidelines that we must do, there must be a screen of every single student, asking four key questions. Here we go. Is that V moving or? Okay. Come back. Right there. As you see here, head coaches, and we put those bullets first, because it's extremely important that we have someone who's going to take ownership and responsibility. Head coach must be present, they're responsible for the athletic screening protocols and making sure that they're followed, but also that once they've done those, that they're, those screening protocols and documentations are forwarded to the A.D., which will then keep a record of those screening protocols to ensure that they're done. Moving to the next slide. The key points, we want to talk about procedures. This is what the daily screening documentation procedure looks like. We want to make sure that students are aware and coaches are aware that when their group of students arise, that they're maintaining six feet between each participant during the screening process to maintain social distancing. Also, the coaches themselves should be screened as well. This is everybody, we want to ensure that not only their student athletes are safe and healthy, but our coaches are healthy as well. And anybody that does not meet the criteria would be asked or would not be able to practice that day. Right here, the temperature checks, we have worked with Monica Mazel, and she'll be providing and making sure that every single school has a thermostat thermometer. We have both thermometers, but we discussed this, it's probably in our best interest, when you look at health and safety, not to have students putting things in their mouths at this time. So we can provide those to those schools upfront, and then they can then reimburse, because if you order them now, they're not readily available. But we have some that we can actually have for schools to get started. You see those four key questions, have you had a fever of one hundred point four in the last seventy-two hours? Have you had a cough, breathing, sore throat? Have you had contact with anyone known to be infected? And do you have a compromised immune system? We sat down yesterday at our meeting and came up with what I think is a great consistent process. If someone has a compromised immune system, we created a standard release form from their primary care doctor, in addition to the regular guidelines that we have in place. That way, we can ensure that on your physical, if you have asthma, you have to make sure you send your doctor that verifies on a separate form, that we can pull this piece of information out to ensure health and safety for that student. Hundred point four? Hundred point four is the CDC's threshold, under CDC guidelines, for temperatures. Right here is just a snapshot of the screening documentation. If you see here, there are no more than ten lines, because guidelines say that the one coach can only work with nine students, which is a group of ten. So the coach would, in essence, ask these questions, list the student's name. If everybody's verified, their coaches to take a picture of that on their phone and/or have this documentation on their person as they're practicing with their group. So if I or yourself go up on a site, you're able to say, have you screened all your students? Here's Bobby, Jimmy, Joe, and I can show you that they've been screened, and that they should be there. Definition of facility, this is from the High School League here. A facility is defined by the South Carolina High School League as a single field, a single gym, a weight room, a single classroom. Example, if you have two gyms, that's two separate facilities. So initially, the thought was we could have two groups on a football field, one on one end and one on the other, but possibly getting back, so no, that one football field constitutes a single facility, therefore only allowing non-students and that coach to be working out on that facility during that block of time. So we wanted to make sure we're following those guidelines from the High School League as well. We wanted to make sure that as far as Aiken County is concerned, and this is something that I applaud the A.D.s for as well, and myself, and agree a hundred percent that that helps to turn it on, to make that active control. Given the fact that this is conditioning only, the use of inside facilities will be prohibited during Phase One, which would be fifteen days. If you're going to run, the best place to run is outside. So this also ensures extended health and safety conditions, where students have fewer touch spaces and things to touch inside of a building. You take a student who is sneezing and sweating, and they're doing push-ups, and another student comes behind them, it's just safer while going through Phase One that we restrict and provide all conditioning to outside facilities. And that's your tracks, your football field, and those types of things, given that conditioning is a primary concern. Athletic training rooms will be only used for immediate use only. If a student gets injured, then we want to make sure that we get them in an environment where we can effectively care for them. Again, restrooms and multi-vehicle room spaces will be cleaned and sanitized. Obviously, if a child has an emergency and has to use a restroom, we're not going to let them go to the edge of the fence line, the tree line, and we're not letting them go to the restroom. So therefore, we have protocols in place to ensure that those are clean and sanitized as well. Bathroom access will be limited to every other stall, this is if a student has to go into the building, and no more people will be allowed in that restroom stall than actually those that every other stall can handle. Locker rooms will not be used, students will have to show up ready and dressed for their conditioning and get into their vehicle once they're done. We're going to assist these schools with putting up the required signs. CDC has signs online that they've designed already for use. We can print those and make sure that those are posted, so individual citizens can see exactly what to expect under these circumstances. Water fountains, obviously, are not be used, because students will be required to bring their own individual water bottles, or have a bottle of water of some sort. So we will not use any type of disposable cups, if we have those like that, it was not recommended that we move in that direction. Next, the conditioning guidelines, no competition under Phase One, I said that earlier. Also, the group size will be limited to ten people, and again, we're repeating this a number of times throughout this presentation, because this is the actual training presentation that coaches were here, and we want to make sure that they've heard it multiple times, and have, they have any question, we're able to address those. Again, no equipment at all. The definition of sports equipment was also provided by the South Carolina High School League, that's not an Aiken County definition. All definitions in this training presentation were provided by the South Carolina High School League. Athletes must arrive dressed and ready to go, so that kind of outlines how those conditioning guidelines and expectation will run. Outdoor activities, again, only outdoor activities will be exercise here in Aiken County, six feet minimum distance, even in your conditioning protocols, personal contact is prohibited, so you can't have any high-fiving, handshaking, and those types of things, those are prohibited. This is conditioning only. All students will be required to wear a face mask whenever they're not actually conditioning, so if they're running and they stop, and the coach is talking to them, they're required to have a face covering of some sort. However, coaches must wear their face coverings at all times, and that is per the South Carolina High School League as well. Again, communal watering devices, they are prohibited, and again, I mentioned again, no competition. And I'm an old coach as well, so I know how hard it is for us to adhere to that no competition. And sometimes our athletes are very competitive, and they want to compete, but we have to explain to them that during this time, this is strictly for getting your body back in shape in the routine, so that you can be in fit condition when we are able to resume those competitions. Next, chilling, we came to the decision that chilling tryouts should not begin prior to August first. You know, it's hard to social distance when you're doing a stunt, that's just a difficult circumstance to be in. No conditioning for the previous year's team members will be allowed, that's organized conditioning. Any student athlete who takes the initiative to get his or hers self in shape, we encourage that. And all athletic eligibility forms must be turned on file, that's just not for chilling, that is for everyone. So every single student before they get started in Phase One must have a physical and go through the growth screening guidelines that we mentioned earlier, to make sure that they have the screenings, and we've identified any chronic illnesses, and those things have been given waivers from their primary care doctor. And guidelines for spectators, this was also something that was outlined in the South Carolina High School League, and recommended that we have guidelines for spectators, where long and short of it, if you're not part of the group, then you're considered a spectator. That is the definition per South Carolina High School League, and once you drop your child off, if you would like to stay, you have to remain in your vehicle and spectate from your vehicle. This eliminates individuals going around touching spaces that we can't supervise. So that is the guidelines that we set forth, and we want to make sure that our coaches, this is something that's a heavy burden that they're doing well, and they have to do, and not add any additional requirement for oversight of sometimes the adults. So that is what the protocols are for spectators. Also, in your packet, and you don't have this, you have a copy of the assurance of risk form. It's very detailed, we've had our legal department look over this form, actually create this form for us to ensure that the district's covered, but also that parents are outwardly aware of what COVID nineteen is and how this condition can affect student athletes. We don't want anyone to, at the end of the day, say, well, I didn't know that. So yes, it is very detailed and extensive form back and front, but this form is just not for our student athletes. It's also for our coaches to sign and say that they understand the issuance of risk that comes with this. As I mentioned earlier, the chronic illness form, we've created one uniform form, so we're not asking coaches or A.D.s at each individual school to come up with their own form or just have a doctor write a note similar to our uniform physical. This is the uniform form that it needs to be on, so it makes, it's kind of like any system, instead of being a system of schools, we want to make sure we're a school system. And then you have a copy of the actual screening document that will be used every single day when these student athletes arrive. So again, these were the experts that they've arranged out behind this, and we had some tough conversations, and it's not always easy to level your passion, and sometimes with, you know, they've been away for a long time, and I know Coach Brian and some of these coaches want to get their athletes back and on the field, but they want to do it for the sake of that. And I can appreciate and applaud them for the tough decisions that they've made in going above and beyond what even the High School League requires. So that just shows you the kind of people we have caring for our children. I'm going to happy to answer the questions that you may have.
Mr. Green, do it first.
As always, thank you for the hard work on this, district staff and all of our athletics folks here. I'll echo that last statement you made, that I know all of us are ready to go out and enjoy a game, not least of which y'all and athletes, so I'm excited for trying our lights again. I'm going to move the goalpost just a little bit, because I was not an athlete, I was a band geek, and we started doing marching band training in July, and that's still the case. How is, how does, does this impact that or not? And do we have some guidance from, I don't know, the South Carolina Band Director Association? I have no idea who would oversee something like that for marching band, or are we just not going to do marching band this year? I've heard that, I hope that's not the case, but we got to be safe, so I'm just curious.
Well, the only thing I can play when it comes to music is a CD player, so that's about the best to get out of me, but no, sir. I have a meeting with athletic directors next week to discuss the protocols, they may very well look similar to this, so I'm sorry you've heard that, but I don't know where you heard it from or why.
Well, I have, I just, I'm glad that we're trying to find a way.
That actually came up in our discussion as well, because when you talk about facilities and the definition of what the High School League has defined as a facility, some sites will be at a disadvantage. North Augusta only has two fields. Villavalle has two, a softball field, a baseball field, practice fields, and a football, they have more facilities as defined by, so that's a discussion that we had to have, and we all agree that we have to respect not only the athletics, but we also have to respect the fine arts as well. So we've had that discussion. So at some point, if these are approved and the athletic, the fine arts procedures are similar, then we'll assume that they would do that as well. One thing I did leave out, which was probably the most important, was the actual date that we're projected to start Phase One. And we would like to get the board's consideration to start Phase One, which will last for the first fifteen days, and can be extended if the district or the South Carolina High School League so deems that we need to, would be the twenty-second. So schools will have to get to working on getting physicals for all those children, getting all the medical releases signed by parents, so that they can start Phase One conditioning by the twenty-second. Yes, June twenty-second.
Ms. Jackson, go.
Being in healthcare, I just have to applaud you all. This is awesome, just the care and the thought that was put into this, so I applaud you for that. But I have one major concern, the screening document. Having the coaches take a picture of the screening document and put it in their phones, wouldn't that be out of compliance with putting private information into public domain?
You know, that is a good point, but we can ask our coaches at the time to make sure that that information is deleted. You know, that is a good point. But we can ask our coaches at the time to make sure that that information is deleted. The only reason that they are putting it somewhere in the vod store is to make sure that if there's an audit, which we will be, we will have audits where folks will go around to check to verify that those students have been screened. The only way they can do that and have it on the field with them would be to have it in their access at that time. But we can, in this training, make sure that I add that when that day is done and it's turned over to that, that information is deleted. It may not be in their phone. They may take a copy of the hard paper with them. But coaches aren't going to keep it with the paper like this. It will be on the field somewhere. But good point. And we need to make sure we consider that in the process.
Mr. Sides, go ahead.
It's a timely presentation because I was beginning to field some questions on the subject. So I appreciate that. And Coach Jeter and company and team, it looks like a whole lot of work went into it. Thanks for that. I think you answered my question as to how long Phase One is. Do we know what's next?
Phase Two, we haven't gotten guidelines from South Carolina High School League to develop Phase Two. So as soon as we get guidelines as to what Phase Two would be able to consist of, then we'll have to come together and have those discussions to make sure our protocols are consistent with that and what Phase Two would be.
Can we figure out a way my Mustangs can get a head start? Don't test Coach Freeman, I said that.
What I would put in my salad is I can make sure all Ake County athletes get a head start anyway.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Moe, go ahead.
Dr. Foster, thank you. First of all, and all the ADs, this is well put together, well thought out. I just had one question, and I'm sure y'all talked about it. I just didn't see it here. And that is, what if you get in the middle of this and you're screening everybody? And rather than just excluding them from participation, what if you were to have one or two or three positive COVID athletes or coaching staff? What's then?
So we did discuss that as well. If there's a situation where we have an outbreak, then everything ceases. Until we can get guidance from CDC and or South Carolina High School League. And then once we resume, we resume back at Phase One again. Even if everyone else has been allowed to move to Phase Two, we want to make a conscious effort to make sure we phase back in, get through another 15 days to ensure that those things are readily available and are safe. And then we'll move to Phase Two from there. But everything, once we have to stop, the plan is that we'll always begin back at Phase One. Because obviously, we did, we were not successful getting through that first phase. So there may be some things we need to revise in Phase One to ensure a greater level of oversight and supervision or training and teaching of our athletes. That may be something that we have to do as well. So not only is there a training piece for coaches, but there's a training piece for the student athletes as well. So we can tell them, here's what you need to do, here's what you should have, here's what you can expect. And I want to commend this group as well. There's 15-minute time slots that they're looking to outline when their student arrives for their training group. If you get there in 16 minutes, then you've just missed out on your opportunity to train that day. Because once they've started, we can't have little Johnny come down and say, "I've been screening. I'm good." And don't have that documentation with that coach because they're responsible for that. But every athlete needs to be on time anyway. So this is not anything short of what they would expect on any given practice.
Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Are the athletes and coaches, the physical process, are they being required to take COVID-19 tests prior to starting?
No, ma'am. That's not part of the required physical test.
Mr. Crane, go ahead.
Just to follow up, I had that test. If you have not had that test, be thankful. That thing is very important.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thanks for all your hard work. This is a very difficult subject because you don't know everyone's level of comfort. And I think the plan really kind of gives everyone some level of comfort. And, you know, my wife isn't here, but the most important people are probably our children, you know, besides our spouse. So, and the most important thing is to protect our children, right? So thanks a lot for putting so much effort into this to keep our children safe, all of our children. Because that is really important in our future.
Mr. Chair, if I can close, I just want to, it's 7:30. They have no obligation to be here. But not only do they sit there and come up with the protocols and have the tough conversations, they want to be present whenever it's delivered. So I say that to the community so that they can see firsthand the type of people that they're entrusting their children with. It's not perfect. We can't guarantee anything, but I can guarantee you that these folks are committed to children. And they're putting forth their time and their energy to make sure their kids are as safe as we can possibly make it. So again, that's just a true testament and individual for what we have here in Ake County.
Thank you. I don't think we need a motion for this. Go ahead.
No, sir, Mr. Chair. We don't need a motion. We just wanted to share the plan and ensure that the board didn't have any objections with the direction we're going.
All right. Good. Thank you, Dr. Foster. All right. So I think, did you have anything else to add? Okay, so we do need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of considering the following matters in such order as the board deems appropriate and is easy because there's only one matter. So that would be the order that we would talk about. Employment matters and administrative importance. Following the executive session meeting, the board will reconvene into regular session to announce the matters considered and to take any actions as may be necessary. So we need a motion for that. Okay, so it's been moved in second. And all those in favor, raise your hand. All right. So we'll go into executive session in about five minutes or so. And appreciate it.
We got everyone? We got everyone? One, two, three, four, five, seven, seven. Okay, okay. So we're back from executive session and we did have one piece of information that we need to take some action on. So I'll entertain a motion for the employment matter that we discussed.
Mr. Chair.
You accept the recommendation, that's right.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we accept the recommendation from administration any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. At seven. None opposed? So that's unanimous count. So that was for the assistant principal for North Augusta Middle School and it's Mr. James Hooper. So congratulations to Mr. Hooper. And I'll entertain a motion to the chair.
Chair, I move that we adjourn. Second.
All right, so it's moving to second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous count. And we'll see on the 23rd, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.